So we will meet our budget on revenue. We're looking good there. And then on the expense side, again, at where we should be is at ninety-one percent. Actually, a few slightly over, but most of them are on or below, and the overall average is at ninety-one percent, which is right where it should be.
Any questions? Okay, if not, do we have a motion to place that, accept that report?
So moved. Schoburg?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we, is the time for oral presentations. This is the time for anyone who is present, who is here to speak on a non-agenda item. Eric, is there anyone in the chambers who is there to speak on a non-agenda item?
We do have about ten people in the chambers. Anyone wanting to speak on a non-agenda item? Not seeing any.
Okay, is there anyone on the phone who is here to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our new business. The time is four oh four, and a hearing is scheduled at this time for request by City of Waterloo to rezone approximately thirty-two acres of an A1 agricultural district and R2 one and two family residence district to R4 RP planned residence, multiple residence district, to allow for a daycare facility and senior activity center located north of five oh one Lakeside Street. This is on pages twelve to twenty-one of the packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter overview aerial notice map and a plat of site were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July first, 2021." We have a motion to receive and place that, this notice on file?
So moved.
Second, Listico.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. At this time, we will have the staff report, please.
This is Dornoff with staff. Request by City of Waterloo to rezone approximately thirty-two acres from A1 agricultural district and R2 one and two family residence district to R4 RP planned multiple residence district to allow for a daycare facility and a senior activity center and future development located north of five oh one Lakeside Street. The area's proposed site is currently zoned A1 agricultural district. It has been zoned since the adoption of zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine, and the R2 one and two family residence district portion has, was rezoned by ordinance thirty-eight thirty-six back on November twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-one. Surrounding land uses to the north agricultural zone A1 agricultural district, to the south residential zoned R2 one and two family residence district, to the east residential and agricultural zoned R2 one and two family residence district, A1 agricultural district, to the west vacant land, medical office and commercials zoned CP planned commercial district. Homes in the area were built between nineteen fifty-six and nineteen eighty-eight. The future land use map does think this area is low density residential. The applicant's requesting to rezone approximately thirty-two acres from A1 agricultural district and R2 one and two family residence district to R4 RP planned multiple residence district in order to construct a new daycare facility and senior activity center and additional area available for future development. The site plan includes fifty-one parking spaces for the, and three handicap spaces for the proposed daycare center, which would be on the southern portion of the lot, and the proposed senior center shows sixty-one parking spaces, six of those being handicap spaces. Ensuring that there is proper number of parking spaces will occur during the building permit process. The City of Waterloo Complete Streets Committee votes recommend sidewalks on both sides of East Fourth Street and an interior, internal connection to the existing North Crossing Development to the west. It should be noted that the site plan submitted for the development does show sidewalks on both sides of East Fourth Street. And it should be noted, City of Waterloo City Council recently passed a resolution supporting creation of new daycare centers in the city. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to rezone approximately thirty-two acres from A1 agricultural district and R2 one and two family residence district to R4 RP planned residence district to be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. Daycare and senior center would be the latest additions to the North Crossing redevelopment of Logan Square. Subjected to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable sitting codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscape, screening, drainage, et cetera. Two, that sidewalks be installed on both sides of East Fourth Street and interior sidewalk connection be created to the existing North Crossing Development.
Is there anyone else on behalf of the city or the engineer that wants to speak on this item? Eric, is there anyone else in the chambers who is there to speak on this agenda item?
I'm just really speaking. I'm just curious as to more detail on how.
Well, for that, you'd have to speak. So you'd have to come to the podium, give your name and address, and ask your question.
Hi, my name is Terry Starks. I reside at five oh one Lakeside Street. So I'm just concerned with the exact location, how far north of five oh one? Or where is that supposed to be at?
Can you see that site plan? I don't, I don't know.
I, I see it, but I can't make the exact details out of them even.
The proposed daycare is proposed to be located directly north of the homes along Lakeside?
So, when you say directly?
I mean, they don't have a dimension on there, but it looks like they're showing something like a twenty-foot setback between the property line and the building somewhere in that area.
Real close. Okay. And sounds like they're going to run sidewalks? So connect it from, because right now, there is no sidewalks there.
This is Schrader with staff. Yes, as part of the proposed redevelopment of the area, they, the developer is proposing that East Fourth Street would be completely reconstructed, and as part of that reconstruction, sidewalk would be installed along both sides.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
This is Flynn. Whose cost will that be for the sidewalk?
This is Schrader with staff. I'm not sure if that's the cities or the developers. I've not been involved with those discussions. This area is in a TIF district, so it is potentially, you know, as part of a development agreement, something that would be negotiated. I'm, I'm not aware for sure.
This is Flynn. I just think if we're going to tell the neighbors there's going to be a sidewalk, we probably should have some direction on who's going to be responsible and the ultimate last person for the sidewalk.
This is Schrader with staff. The residents would not be responsible for paying to put the sidewalk in. If there are, if sidewalk is put in, abutting any existing property owner, then they would be, become responsible for maintenance, although I believe it doesn't look like they're showing, it looks like they're only showing, putting in sidewalk along the portion that the developer owns on both sides of the road.
This is Listico. As far as regulations on screening, would the twenty-foot setback between the homes on Lakeside and this new development, would that qualify for screening being installed or needed?
This is Schrader with staff. Yeah, as part of a RP planned district, that's something that's always, it can be required or it can be waived if the particular situation is determined that a screen is not needed. So I'm not sure if there is a representative for the developer on that can address whether they were proposing it anyway, but that is certainly something that could be required as part of the approval.
Is there anyone else in the chambers who is there to speak on this agenda item?
Yes.
Yes. My name is Helen Seemster, and my question is, how soon will the development start once it's been approved?
This is Schrader with staff. I am not aware, I'm not sure if there's a representative of the developer on that can answer that.
Okay.
Hi, this is Noel with staff. I know that the developer would like to start destruction season as well, at least start moving dirt and things of that nature to get it going. Obviously, it'll depend on how fast the final design work can be done for the entire area, so it could also start in the spring, but the intention is to start this fall and winter if we can.
Okay. And I heard you talk about sidewalks. I know part of the land was, had no easement, so it would probably be up to the developer if they want to do the twenty-foot or whatever, because that land has no easement.
I'm not sure what specific land you're talking about and...
Well, the first north in, when you say after five oh one Lakeside, probably half of that land probably does not have any easement as far as for the city.
Well, there's right-of-way for Fourth Street, so this would be proposed within the right-of-way.
Okay. I'll just leave it.
I'm sorry, Helen, first of all, can you give us your address? And then, second of all, were you asking about the setback or about the sidewalk?
Yes. Well, I guess both. It's forty forty Homer Street.
So the sidewalk, I think is what Eric was talking about in terms of both will be along Fourth Street, but the setback, I think it was previously referred to was the homes.
Was it the twenty, twenty feet behind those homes?
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong though, Eric.
This is Schrader with staff. So the site plan is on the screen. It does not have a dimension listed, just comparing it to, you know, parking stall widths, which are nine feet. It looks like it's probably more than twenty feet. We could try and scale it off on the official submittal, but I'm going to guess that building is currently shown as at least twenty, probably maybe thirty feet north of the existing property line. They're proposing to rezone it to R4 RP, which is a planned residence district. Planned residence districts have flexibility in setbacks. They can be approved for less than what the underlying zoning district would normally require, but this is, would be considered a side yards between the property, the daycare facility and the property lines to the south. It's the rear yard for the homes, but it's the side yard for the daycare facility, of which the zoning ordinance would normally only require a minimum of a five-foot side yard setback. Building codes generally are going to require ten foot unless they put in a firewall, and the proposed site plan, although not, doesn't have a dimension, is showing at least twenty, if not thirty foot.
Okay, and so the senior citizen facility is on the...
North of that.
The north of that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Eric, there's a, there's a map with the scale on that we're looking at. It looks like it's about thirty feet from the edge of the parking area, and then about forty feet from their property line to the edge of the building.
Okay.
This is Flynn from staff. Do we know who the developer is in our packet? On page twenty, I'm looking for the application for rezoning, and, and that is for the property in the next request, and I don't see anything regarding the application or the developer for this particular request. But we still usually, when the city requests, we get a sheet showing that.
Should, this is Schrader with staff. That should be on page twenty?
Page twenty is Ingersoll's, Ingersoll Avenue, City of Waterloo. Okay, this is, it says southwest corner of Kimball Avenue in San Marnan is the property?
No, that's for the next one.
That's what I thought, but you said it was for this one.
This is Virginia. The, the engineering, engineer is Robinson Engineering Company, can call me this year. And then it looks like the project is called.
You see that? It says southwest corner of...
Yeah, this is Noel with staff. Yeah, it looks like there's some, there's some errors on page twenty in the application. Looks like they may have merged two of them together. I, I can tell you that the City of Waterloo, some of the land is ours to the north. A portion to the south is, Ben Stroh is the developer of North Crossing that's done the majority of, if not all, the work at Logan Plaza into North Crossing Transformation. I mean, that is who the city will continue to partner with for these next phases of projects.
And Noel, would he be the contact for these people that had questions regarding the development?
He certainly can be. His number is on there, the eight oh eight Dearborn for property owner's name, where it says City of Waterloo and North Crossing is correct on here. Or they could also call Robinson Engineering as well with questions specific to the site plan layout, as they're the ones working on the entire layout of the North Crossing area and these sites on the east side of East Fourth.
This is Schrader with staff. Alex is here to clear up some confusion, I believe. Go ahead, Alex.
This is Alex Bauer with Robinson Engineering, eight nineteen Second Street in Independence, Iowa. So there, so what we have in this area is interest with several parties looking to do development, and so with so many different people involved, this, and working with Noel, it made the best sense for the city to be the applicant for the rezoning of this process. So we've been tasked by the city to do a mass prelimi, a mass preliminary plat and design of the roadways there. And the, there is another project that we would try and link with this, the Verdant Creek Project. So that project has been designed for quite some time, and we would utilize the material from that project and leverage the, a mass project grading scheme to enhance the prices of that project and this proposed project. So we can accommodate different facets of the daycare facility, looking for a place to provide daycare opportunities for families in the area. The senior activity center, which would pair with the hospital just nearby, and then some other opportunities for housing with, as part of some of the programs that the hospital does as well. As far as setbacks go, we placed the daycare facility on the south. I, I had the choice of where to place either one, and both of them should be very quiet activities, especially after five o'clock, but with the daycare facility on the south side, it gave us a buffer there. When we do daycare facilities, we always think about the security of the children, and so we don't like to develop a daycare facility where there's not a lot of open space around the building. We like to have good, open sightlines to see where kids are moving, if they've moved out of the fenced areas, et cetera, who else may be around in the area. And so we do have a pretty comfortable setback right there. To the south edge of the sidewalk from the building face on that plan would be ten feet, for example. So you can kind of use that as a gauge of reference. I, I don't know specifically offhand, but I would guess that it's probably in the realm of thirty foot from the property line.
I got a question. As far as drainage goes and water retention, flood mitigation, stuff like that, do you have any plans to have any kind of like a water retention pond?
Absolutely. So this area is very well-known to be able to handle a lot of infiltration, which is really good for us at this location. Basically, everything, the land from the east side of the proposed daycare facility and senior housing center, and then to the current development of residential housing is scheduled for detention, stormwater management essentially, and so that would cover for the most part, anything from Logan and over to essentially the, the massive property that's a part of this rezoning on the east side of Fourth Street. And so portions down through Donald, all the way up to Rolston. So this is going to handle a massive area to provide detention, a regional detention for all of that land. The city is, currently owns quite a major portion of that.
Where would the detention pond be located?
That, it would be east of the, so there, there's a sliver of, of some standing water that's shown in the current image. So, forgot to get my, so we got two images here, depending on which screen I look at. So the houses on the, the west side of Homer Street would be directly west of those houses and up to where the proposed daycare facility and senior activity center are located, along Fourth.
That's pretty big.
It's a big area.
Yeah.
The, it's, I don't, I can't tell you specifically how large it would be. The, the goal there is, and, and any, anytime we deal with stormwater, the goal is to take care of the, you know, try and manage all of the risks of creating any development through an area. We just want to ensure that whatever we come up with, we have a good avenue for protecting any downstream houses. The good news is, is all of that area is already lower than the surrounding areas. We just have to make sure that when we put this together, we have a, a good overflow route, which will be flowed, we will flow that north of the current Homer roadway development, Homer and Niles, and we'll have that overflow path run through those routes.
Will there be safety with the daycare being that close to that water? Will there be, you know, safety measures to protect the children?
Well, yes, so that, that all goes together. It's, it's this, don't make a bathtub that you can't drain to a good location if it got plugged. So that, that's all part of the goal. We don't want any buildings to get flooded. We don't want yards to get flooded. So we'll be looking at those scenarios as we develop the report and coordinate that with the city engineer.
Is that going to be a, a dry retaining pond, or is it supposed to maintain water?
Yeah, with, with the...
That's what happened with that, the pond you're referring to, the stand you were referring to? That was done some time ago, and it's watering it twenty-four to seven.
Sure, so we do, we will be conducting some soil bores in the near future to help show us what's underneath there. Our guess is, is with all of the, basically, lack of maintenance is the best way to put it. If, if nobody's been maintaining that area, what happens is, is you, you get silt that builds up and accumulates, basically, the, the water pulls the, the silt to that basin, and if at one time it did infiltrate water very well, it would be blinded at this point. So now, you know, now you have a situation where it can't drain. With this development, there would be, at least it has been discussed at this point, the detention basin would be placed in a homeowners association. That's the best phrase I have for now. Basically, any member that is sharing the convenience of that basin, basically those folks that that basin was designed for, whether, you know, it would be the commercial structures that are most likely along Logan or the residential structures, the daycare facilities, they're all going to be part of an, an association that is going to be required to maintain that detention basin. And of course, that maintenance is at the review and mercy of the review of the City of Waterloo.
Are you saying how many to charge for your development?
No, no, no. This is, so...
Owners of this development.
Yeah, it would be any of, of the, correct. So as, as part of the, the service area of this pond is going to be essentially, for the most part, it's going to be the location of that pond and anything west and north of it. There are some, some other locations to the southwest, but it does not include any of the, the current residential areas to the south or east of that pond's location.
I had a call for Glenn Moore against on Lakeside, and he said, I guess, maybe forty-five years...
Hold on, hold on. This meeting is televised, and anyone that needs to speak has to come up to the mic, identify their name and address, and then make their statement, so come, so come on up if you would like.
My name is Aaron Stacy Roberts. I came representing Glenn Moore, and he said at some time, I guess he's been there over fifty years, that he used to fish over there, and there was a nice sized lake over there. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, but I think his concern was he's been getting water in his basement over the last decade, and he's thinking it's because it's filling in. So that's why I was told to ask, how deep would it be? Maybe that would pull the water away from his home.
Sir, could you also give us your, the address of the property that you're talking about?
I think it's fifteen forty-seven Lakeside. I left the front page that he gave me with his address to the car. Glenn Moore is his name.
I think this is an excellent development for our side of Waterloo, and I've lived there that long also, and I do know that I've never got water in my basement from that. I know that some of the, the, what do you call, the sewer lines out there were not developed for some time, and maybe, I don't know what the problem is, but there was a lot of sand out there when we first moved out there. The pond is not always water in there. There is water that comes in there, and I, I don't want to stand and defend this, but that is my property. but that is my property. And I do know that I would not stand here and say, put it out there because it would flood out my home as well as everybody else's. But I think it's a, it's a good, um, for the east side or the west, uh, north side, whichever you want to call it, it's, it's a good opportunity to de- develop that land out there. I still have land on Lakeside there that I too want to develop into a good housing development. And, um, I think it's a great opportunity to do that in our area.
Eric, are there other, uh, folks in the chambers that are here to speak on this agenda item?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Um, is there anyone else who is on Zoom or by phone that is here to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Holderman, so moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Okay. So the public hearing is closed. The commissioners have a motion?
This is Schoberg. I'll make a motion to approve the request to rezone approximately 32 acres from A1 Agricultural District and R2, 1 and 2 Family Residential District to R4 RP Planned Multiple Residence District for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The daycare and senior center will be the latest additions to the north crossing redevelopment of the Logan Square area. Subject to the following conditions. The final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, and others. That sidewalks be installed along both sides of East Fourth Street and interior sidewalk connection be created to the existing north crossing development.
I will second that, Listaco.
Okay, any discussion?
This is Flynn. I just wanted to make sure that it, that would address the screening issues for, um, that you had brought up.
This is Trader with Staff. Alex, I don't know if you, uh, any thoughts on screening, um, of that southerly lot between there? Maybe particularly between the parking lot and the houses to the south. Is that something? Six foot solid fence or something like that?
Yeah, this is Alex with Robinson Engineering. Um, we can definitely work with the residents on, on coming up with something that would be palatable to both, you know, the daycare facility and the, uh, the residents there. Um, whether that be, you know, if, if they would like that parking lot to be screened, we could, uh, come up with a fence solution or perhaps some plantings to break up that monotony. I try and avoid hedges, but we can, we can take a look at different options.
Thank you. I appreciate that being explained for the residents. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay. If not, all those in favor of the motions, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Alex, and to the residents who were here to speak on this. Okay. The time is 4:35 PM and a hearing is scheduled at this time for a request by Brad Freeman on behalf of Veridian Credit Union for a site plan amendment to the C2C, the Commercial Conditional Zoning District for a new, a new 3651 square foot, um, sorry, 3,651 square foot commercial building located at 102 Tower Park Drive. This is on pages 22 to 35 of the packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee, stating aye, Patty McGee. Do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, overview, aerial notice map, plan, website, and elevations are mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on June 24th, 2021. Could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, could we have the staff report, please?
This is Storm Office Staff. The request, um, for a site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area as would appear to be compatible with other commercial development in the area. The area in question has been zoned C2 CZ, Conditional Commercial District since adoption of zoning of ordinance 3490 on June 23rd, 1987. Surrounding land uses and their zoning designation is Falls to North San Martin Drive and Commer- and Commercial, Zone C1 Commercial District and C1 CZ Commercial Conditional District. To the south, Farmer State Bank, Community Bank of Trust, Lock Funeral Home, and other commercial, Zone C2 CZ Commercial Conditional District. And to the east, Kimball Avenue, um, Commercial and Residential, Zone C2 Commercial District. To the west, Waterfalls Car Wash and Lincoln Savings Bank, Zone C2 CZ Commercial, um, Commercial Conditional Zoning. A portion of the property is located within the Dry Run Creek Flood Plain as indicated by Federal Insurance Administration Rate Map. Um, however, the portion that is in the floodway is located along existing, um, east, um, si- east side of the building, um, along the existing sanitary sewer line easement and drainage easement. Um, and so it should not affect the development. Um, the applicant's proposing to build a 3,651 square foot, um, credit union with four drive-up lanes located on Tower Park Drive and the corner of San Martin Drive and Kimball Avenue. The bank building will be replacing a Burger King restaurant that closed in 2020. The applicants are proposing 39 parking spaces, two of which would be handicap spaces. The number of parking spaces required by the zoning ordinance is one space for each 300 square feet of floor area, which require 13 parking spaces and one handicap space. So they far, are exceeding the minimum parking requirements. The driveway entrance to the parking lot will be on Tower Park Drive, which is the same as, is for the current building. The building is being proposed as a single story with brick veneer and gray fiber panels, composite panels, stone veneer, and wood series cement panels covering the exterior of the building. The applicants are proposing its detention basin on the, um, northeast side of the building adjacent to the intersection of San Martin and Kimball Avenue, where the existing, um, drainage, um, detention basin is located for the Burger King. Um, the City of Waterloo Complete Streets Committee voted to recommend sidewalks along Tower Park Drive and Nicky Street in order to have a connection with flashing Beacon Crossing of San Martin Drive and the sidewalks to the neighborhoods to the north of San Martin Drive. Um, during tech review, it's noted that the engineering have not received an updated drainage plan, so they only received that during the, um, in, in, before, um, it gets a building, um, building permit. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a site plan amendment to the C2 ZZ Commercial Conditional District be approved for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area and would be compatible with surrounding development. Development will replace an existing empty building with the following conditions. That the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including not limited parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, et cetera, and a sidewalk be installed along Power Park Drive and Nicky Street.
So, uh, this is-
Thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Eric.
I had a, I had questions. I was just going to ask a staff question. Um, so is this building going to be the building that the new, uh, development is going to move into? In other words, not building another building? Or are they going to tear the building down, build another?
It's going to be a new building.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh.
Are there other initiatives underway?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My other question, I had it actually written down here in my notes. Engineering has not seen an updated drainage plan and that was in the tech review notes. And so it continues and says, um, engineering has not seen an updated drainage plan and the current site plan is substantially different than the one that was presented previously. Now, has that been addressed? Engineering's concerned that they put that in the tech review notes?
It needs to be addressed before a building permit will be issued. That's when drainage gets taken care of.
Okay.
And Eric, this is Virginia. I think that, I think, um, in the condition then, in the recommendation, I think that's covered.
Okay.
A good question.
Okay.
Um, are there other questions for staff? If not, I believe Mr. Freeman is on Zoom. Okay. Mr. Freeman, can you hear me?
I can.
Hi. I'll, do you want to, um, state your name and, um, and address if there's going to be anything you want to address with the commission?
Um, I'm Brad Freeman, the civil engineer for the, uh, project. My address is 1717 Ingersoll Avenue in Des Moines, Iowa. And I'm just really here to answer any questions that you guys might have. Um, I will say our client rep, Chris Wond, is also on the line in case there are any questions for him.
This is Flynn from the commission, wondering what the timeline for this project would be?
This is Chris Wond. I'm the architect on the project. I'm with Premise Construction out of Cedar Rapids. Uh, address is 401 8th Avenue Southeast. Um, I was actually going to address kind of the existing building question that came up as well. Uh, obviously the Burger King that's there doesn't quite fit the look that Veridian wants. So that is actually, uh, we've already got a demolition permit application into the city for that and that building should be coming down here very shortly, actually. Um, and then the new building will be constructed. The plan is to start construction on the new building yet this fall. Um, probably around that September timeframe, assuming we can get the plans into the city and through the permitting process in time for that. But you'll see, uh, foundations and all of that starting yet this fall, hopefully having the building enclosed, uh, before winter hits. Uh, so we can continue on the interior construction throughout the winter months with a completion date. I believe we have an earmark for some time in April or May of next year.
Thank you.
All right. Are there, um, Eric, is there anyone there in the chambers that is here to speak on this agenda item?
No, there is not.
Is there anyone else on the phone who is here to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The hearing is, the public hearing is closed. Um, any other discussion amongst the commission or, um, is there a motion?
I did have one more question. This is Flynn for the architect. As far as, you know, currently with the Burger King entrance, it was just one entrance, you know, in and out. Is that what it's going to be or would they potentially have two entrances in and out from, um, that location?
Yeah. So if you look in the packet, there is a site plan, uh, actually several. Um, we're propos- we're proposing a second, um, curb cut along Tower Park Drive. I believe the first one, and Brad can correct me on this, I believe the first one towards the east, uh, is actually roughly where the existing one is, so we didn't have to deal with any, uh, the existing, uh, storm sewer inlets along Tower Park Drive. And that one really feeds mostly the drive-up lanes. And then the other entrance would feed more of the public parking section of the parking lot right in front of the building, uh, to the west of the building, um, and then be an outlet for the drive-up lanes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is Holderman. I'll move that the, uh, request to, for the site plan amendment to the C2 CZ Commercial Conditional District be approved for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding area and would be compatible with surrounding development. The development will replace an existing empty building and with the following conditions. The final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, and so on, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, et cetera. And that a sidewalk be installed along Tower Park Drive and Nicky Street.
I'll second that, Ms. Flynn.
And also included in the, um, in the proposed motion there, is it also talking about, uh, that everything has to be clear with engineering and the, having a drainage plan?
That's, yeah. That's one of the conditions.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, um, by the commission? Um, all those in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Wa- um, Wond and Mr. Freeman.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the request by Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity to vacate an alley located south of 429 Clay Street in the R3 Multiple Residence District. First, we will have the staff report, please.
Okay. Yeah, this is a Hyburger with the, uh, staff report. Uh, the applicant is requesting to vacate a 2,260 square feet alley so that the area can be incorporated into residential development. Uh, the request to vacate city-owned property will give additional 2,260 feet of land for Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity to give them more space and flexibility to construct a new home. Uh, the request to vacate would not appear to have any negative impact on vehicular pedestrian traffic in the area. Uh, the site has been zoned R3 Multiple Residence District since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1969. Uh, to the north is residential industrial businesses, R3 Multiple Residence District, and R1 Light Industrial District. To the southeast and west is all residential, R3 Multiple Residence District. Uh, the request would not require any buffering by ordinance. The proposed vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on drainage. Uh, the area primarily consists of single-family homes constructed between the 1900s and 1940s. Uh, the vacate area is in Zone X protected by Le- uh, LEVI, not in a special flood hazard area according to FEMA. Um, the vacate area, uh, does not contain any utilities. Uh, there is a 30-foot storm sewer and 8-inch storm sewer underneath Clay Street. Uh, the area on the future land use map is mixed residential, low, medium, high-density residential professional offices. This vacate request would be in compliance with such designation. Uh, the request to vacate city-owned, uh, right-of-way would not appear to negatively affect the area or traffic conditions. Uh, the alley is no longer needed for city purposes. Um, and, uh, therefore, staff recommends requests by Habitat, Heartland Habitat for Humanity to vacate 2,260 square feet of city-owned right-of-way at south of 429 Clay Street, located in the R3 Multiple Residence District, be approved for the following reasons. Request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Uh, the request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. And the, uh, city alley right-of-way is no longer needed for city purposes. And that's the staff report.
This is, uh, Virginia on the commission. Um, so is that currently being used as an alleyway or is it by anyone?
This is Trader with Staff. It was platted as an alley. I'm not sure if it was ever opened as an alley, perhaps before Highway 63 went in or perhaps not, but it is not currently being used as an alley.
Okay, I have a question for staff.
Okay.
So this is do not, I was just asking staff if I needed to recuse myself from voting on this item because, um, Habitat for Humanity, um, brings requests forward to receive funding, uh, to the Waterloo Housing Trust Fund. And I said as part of the Waterloo Housing Trust Fund. And the purpose of their request to that group is to get money to build housing that may be related- that may be related to, um, disability-related housing and accessible housing. So is that a concern?
This is Schrader with staff, I would not think that would be a conflict.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I speak? Yeah, one moment, Mr. Greer, um, hold on, we will get to you, I promise. Um, sorry, go ahead, was there another commissioner that had a question? Okay, is there someone from, um, Habitat that is either on the phone or there, Eric, to speak on this?
Does not appear to be.
Okay, I know we have at least two people on, um, Zoom and phone that are here to speak on, on this, so we'll, we'll start with them. Uh, Ms., uh, Tiffany Greer, if you want, um, I think you're already unmuted. Please identify your, um, your name and your address, and then go ahead and, um, address the commission.
Okay, um, my name is, uh, Tiffany Greer. I'm located at seven oh seven Lincoln Street in Waterloo, Iowa. I'm speaking on behalf of my dad Luther Phillips that resides at three ten Congress Street, Waterloo, Iowa. Um, Habitat does not own all that land there. So if they vacate that ordinance for that alleyway, we can't get to the land back there that we own. And that's not fair, so it's like, they trying to take what we have. There's a lot back there that they don't own where they're building at. So if you take that away, then how are we supposed to get to our land? Like, there's enough land back there, we plant back there, garden, we didn't do it this year, but if we wanted to next year and they have the alley, how are we supposed to get back there to our land? We supposed to go through they driveway, through they garage to try to get back to what we own?
Eric, do you have, or, um, Ms. Greer, can you tell us in terms of, uh, the commissioners have a map, but, um, I don't see three ten Congress Street down there, and then what lot?
We haven't gotten anything in the mail from, only thing we got from Habitat was them wanting us to sell the land that we have over there in that area on Clay Street. We didn't get anything about this meeting, anything about them wanting to take that alley. We got another letter from some other company from Oklahoma about wanting the land over there for the alleyway. Like, all the paperwork that everybody else got about the alley, wherever, north crossing, we didn't get anything.
When, when you pay property taxes on that parcel, does it have an address?
It's not an address, it's just a lot number.
This is Schrader with staff, I'm trying to make sure I identify the property.
I would have the paperwork to give you the lot number, the information, but I don't have that with me.
Okay, um, Ms. Greer, give, um, give us one moment, I think, um, Eric said he's trying to pull up.
This is Schrader with staff, so the, the vacant lot in question, is it owned by Luther Phillips?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what you said.
So you may not be able to see it, but I do have a map of that parcel pulled up on the screen here in the room. That parcel does have frontage along the alley, but it also has frontage along both Clay Street to the east and Saxton Street to the south.
So we, we have to go around, we can't go up through the alley that you want to sell the Habitat, like we normally do, like we used to. But see, I mean, like, I can, I can understand, I guess, but I don't really understand because I know other people that try to buy alley land that can't get it, but I guess it's just for bigger companies that want to do other stuff. Is that how it works?
This is Schrader with staff, that is not how it works. So are you indicating your opposition to the request to vacate the alley and convey it to Habitat?
Yes, I am.
I thank you.
Uh, can I speak, this is Terrence Hollingsworth.
Yes, Mr. Hollingsworth, sorry.
Address forty-eleven Ankeny, I am familiar with this property and, um, this, you know, that's pretty accurate that if you allow, uh, i- if you look on page forty, uh, the top of that, uh, picture shows the alleyway, and then to the left, it shows a, uh, a gated, uh, parcel that Habitat owns, but behind that is the, uh, is the land that Ms. Greer is talking about. And then to the left of that, there's also, uh, property, uh, land that, uh, also goes with the other land. And so, um, essentially, she's, she's correct that once you cut that off, it makes it much more difficult for them to access the land. And number two, it makes it actually more difficult if they wanted to develop the land and, um, maybe build property or something like that, that also makes it difficult. So, um, when I found out about this, I'm the one that told Tiffy, um, Ms. Greer, that she should come on this call for at least to be able to postpone this decision to find out what is the best, uh, uh, use, if that's even a, a viable plan for, uh, for, for the area over there.
Right, this is Schrader with staff, with the property having two other street frontages, it, it's, uh, a little, uh, I'm not exactly sure how the alley access would limit it if the lot was proposed to be subdivided. A lot could not have alley access frontage only anyway, the ordinance would not allow that. But staff is, um, fine, uh, if the item were to be tabled. Habitat is not proposing, uh, any, um, immediate development that I'm aware of. Or is there a representative that wanted to speak?
This is Holderman, Eric, is the, the lot in question that Ms. Greer is talking about, is that the area outlined in blue?
This is Schrader with staff, yes. What's the street that runs along the east side of it? That is Clay Street.
So, uh, one thing I say, um, since you, since you're not opposing to at least to, um, uh, table it at the moment, the one thing that I want you, uh, to, to make note of is there's a house on, on the corner of Sax and, and Clay Street. And behind that is, is really, you know, there's a, it, it's, it's kind of weird. You have to kind of see for yourself to understand how to, how the lots are put together. But, um, but again, the one thing that I have concern about is if you close that off and you make it, uh, private because they're gonna, they want to build a property, um, make that a parking lot, then how do they access that property? How do they make it so that if they want to develop that property further, uh, uh, do so? And so, uh, it's a fair conversation, I think it, it just needs to be, uh, looked at with the, with the other lot owners over there before any decision is made.
Um, Eric, can you also address, I think Ms. Greer brought this up, um, she had a question about how adjoining property, or how or if adjoining property owners need be notified?
Uh, this is Schrader with staff, um, so typically, a vacate request would be involve, um, abutting property owners. Uh, if there is a request that doesn't involve all abutting property owners, we would typically, um, mail a courtesy notice to adjoining property owners. I'm not familiar with this request, I was not aware that there was a different adjoining property owner. So, um, if this item is tabled, we would, um, certainly reach out to those that spoke, and we could, uh, certainly do a courtesy notice before the item would come back.
This is Listaco, I've got a question. Uh, in the photograph at the top of page forty, we're staring directly down the alleyway, and it appears that the, there's a gate about halfway down the alleyway, is, is that correct? Why is there a gate on a, an alleyway?
This is Schrader with staff, I have no knowledge on any of that.
I can answer that, this is, uh, Terrence Hollingsworth. On the back end of that, uh, lot is Highway sixty-three. So if you keep going, you'll run right into Highway sixty-three, and there's a, uh, uh, a fence at the back of that, and then to the left where you see, um, the, the fencing and this, uh, like a, I don't know, storage thing, that's, uh, a fence, and then there is another fence behind that. And then, of course, to the right, you see the, uh, development that Habitat is, uh, currently building right now.
Well, this is Flynn with staff, and I would be more comfortable tabling this till we know more about the access, and, I mean, you're saying they have full access from Clay, but if she's saying this is how they access her property, I think we need to get some clarification on all of this before, I would be comfortable voting on it?
It looks to me like they've got access off of two streets. And so I don't, uh, I don't believe that, uh, please, may I finish speaking?
One, one moment, Ms. Greer.
No, may I finish speaking, please? I'm just saying, it looks like there is access off of two streets, and, uh, I don't, I can't see where the alley would be that big of a deal.
Have you been over to the property, sir?
Yeah.
I have not.
So I would suggest you go over to the property.
Okay, 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 one person at a time, please speak, because it is televised and we are taking minutes, so, um,
So when, okay, go ahead. Go ahead. So when we ac, okay, so when we access and we come up through the so-called alley, um, we come up through, we come through there, we park, like, when we need to cut the grass and do all that stuff, we come up through there and do that. The only time we usually come around to the other street, Clay Street, if you want to, Clay Street, when we have to shovel the snow in the wintertime, otherwise, we have to come up through all on the sidewalk, and all on the sidewalk, and all that kind of stuff. So it's actually more feasible to have an alley.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hollingsworth, did you want to say something additional?
Yeah, I, I'll just say that, you know, without, uh, people actually being there looking how the, uh, property is, it's hard to get an understanding of it because it's almost as, it's, if you can think of the letter T, that's how the property is, uh, put together. And, um, i- it's not only, uh, closing off access, but we're also talking about future development of the, of that, of that property. And so therefore, um, I don't know what the right answer is today, but I think, uh, to make a decision about that today and not include the, uh, the property owners, uh, is a mistake.
Um, and this is, uh, Virginia again, um, I'm not sure what map Eric pulled up, but I'm looking at the access site, um, and it is more visible in terms of the lot line, but I would, um, second the motion, uh, by Commissioner Flynn to table this until we can get some additional information in terms of access and, and use of that current alley. Uh, is there any other discussion then by commission?
This is Listaco, I'd just like to state, I'd, I think it'd be better to have more, uh, research and evidence in front of us for this particular item.
Okay, and to clarify, uh, to, uh, Commissioner Flynn, did you make a motion?
Yes, that was my intent. So I, I make a motion to table this request, this vacate.
I'll second that, Surfing.
Any additional discussion by the commission? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, is that, um, Greg, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, um, motion is carried, table. Um, Eric, can you speak to, if, uh, residents in that area have questions, should they contact planning department then?
This is Schrader with staff. Yes, they can contact the planning and zoning office, uh, at three one nine two nine one four three six six. Um, we will, um, look at, uh, getting with Habitat to let them know, and perhaps it'll be best to see if we can set up some sort of meeting per, e- either in person or perhaps just a, um, um, video conference to discuss.
Don't you normally put a, uh, sign on the property?
This is Schrader with staff, no, for board of adjustment items, they put a sign. Um, for planning commission items, if it's a hearing, we do mail notice.
Right.
Vacates, we don't normally mail notice, although we do typically send a courtesy one if there's an abutting property owner not part of the request as here, but I wa, I wasn't aware there was. I thought Habitat owned both sides.
Well, I would suggest that we do send out notices as we, we're talking about, because we have specific people who would want to be notified about this situation, and that's the entire reason why we're tabling it, so, yeah.
Yep.
All right, um, thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth and Ms. Greer for, um, attending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the request by Lock Realty Incorporated to vacate a utility easement adjacent to the Kimball Avenue right-of-way, located at forty-one forty Kimball Avenue in the C two EZ Commercial Conditional Zoning District. We have the staff report, please.
This is Dornoff with staff, uh, the request is a vacant easement that was created, um, when a portion of Kimball Avenue was vacated. The area question has been Zone C two ZZ since, um, June twenty-third, nineteen eighty-seven. To the north is commercial Zone C two CZ Commer, um, Conditional Commercial Zone E District. Um, to the south is US twenty, um, to the east is Kimball Avenue, Commercial Residential Zone C two Commercial District, and to the west is Commercial Zone C two Commercial District, and R four Multiple Residence District, and CP Plan and Commercial District. The applicant's proposing to vacate a utility easement that was created with a portion of Kimball Avenue right-of-way was vacated by ordinance thirty-five ninety-seven on November seventh, nineteen eighty-eight. There does, there does appear to be the single overhead wire running, um, through the easement, but most of the overhead wires are located in existing city right-of-way. Um, since he appears that the wires do not belong to Mid-American, um, staff is attempting to contact Lumens, which is, used to be Century Link, and MediaCom, um, to find out through, um, beyond the, um, normal tech communicate, tech, um, packet communication. Um, I got emails back from Mid-American and Lumens, both saying that the wires do not belong to them. However, MediaCom would not return our, um, comment, would not return our, um, emails. Um, Waterworks has a twelve-inch water main that appears to be in the southern portion of the vacated area. Therefore, um, we talked to the, um, applicants, and, um, they are only requ, they only need it for a sign, so they're only going to request that half the easement be vacated at this time. And they approved of that. Um, therefore, staff recommends that the request for an easement to vacate, um, in the C two ZZ Commercial District located forty-one forty Kimball Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic condition in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact throughout the area, um, with the following condition, that the easement vacate will cover just the northern half of the original vacate area proposed.
Any questions for staff?
Well, I was just wondering why, uh, this is do not, I was just wondering why one of those entities, whether Lumens or one of the other entities, wasn't returning contact with the planning office? And I think that MediaCom.
Yeah, MediaCom, Lumens and Mid-American responded promptly.
So, yeah, MediaCom, I'm sorry. You know, I was just, general comment, need to return contact with, contacts used, you know?
Is that, um, this is Holderman, and I'm sorry, Eric, were you finished?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
I'm done.
Uh, the wire that's overhead, is that in the part that's going to be vacated, or?
Yeah, it's the easement.
This is Schrader with staff, um, MediaCom frequently has lines on Mid-America's poles. Mid-America will frequently move their poles and have issues with MediaCom. Mid-America will frequently move their poles and have issues with MediaCom relocating their line. And in some instances will relocate, put in their new poles and move their lines onto the new poles, but leave the old poles because MediaCom didn't move their line. So that appears to be the situation here, but we haven't got confirmation of that since MediaCom did not respond. MediaCom would have the ability to move the line on, so we're recommending to proceed with the vacate.
Okay, I guess that's what I was wondering is, can we do that? And tell them they gotta get it out of there?
This is Schrader with staff. That would be my understanding, that that would be within our right to do, to say this area is no longer needed. It's not like we're eliminating, you know, their ability to have a line in that area. That there's poles directly adjacent that they can put the line on.
And where they're putting, they're planning to put the sign shouldn't affect the pole anyway, so, or the wire, so, from the pole location, so it should be fine.
Is there someone from the applicant? Either, I don't think anybody else is on the phone. Is somebody there in the chambers, Eric?
Yep, one second.
Good afternoon. Eric Locke, Locke Funeral Home, Lock Realty, 1420 Olympic Drive in Waterloo. Appreciate your consideration today and here to answer any questions that you've got for us. Thank you.
Will I make a motion that?
Go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the request for an easement vacate in the C2 CZ Commercial Conditional District located at 4140 Kimball Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The one, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. Two, the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area and would be compatible with surrounding development. And with the following condition, the easement vacate will cover the north one-half of the original vacate area.
I will second that, Listico.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, this is Listico. I just wanted to point out, I think we just went through the process of approving some development by Locke earlier, a few months ago, and thank you for having the patience to go through the process correctly.
Any other discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Locke. Okay, next is a request by Niamh Masick to vacate City Right-of-Way located north of 312 Cothie in the M1 Light Industrial District in the city. Staff report, please.
Yes, this is Heiburger with the staff report. The applicant's requesting to vacate 2,046 feet of city-owned right-of-way. The request to vacate city-owned right-of-way will give an additional 2,046 square feet of land for Niamh Masick's auto sales business to park vehicles on the property. The right-of-way at the dead end of Cothie is not needed for road purposes and has historically been used as access parking area for 312 Cothie Avenue. The area in question is owned M1 Light Industrial District and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance, number 249 in 1969. Surrounding land uses in their zoning are as follows. To the north is Broadway Street Industrial Development Zone, M1 Light Industrial District. To the south, Residential Development Zone, R2 1 and 2 Family Residence District and M1 Light Industrial District. To the east, Commercial Industrial Development Zone, R2 1 and 2 Family District and M1 Light Industrial District. To the west, Commercial Industrial and Residential Development Zone, M1 Light Industrial District. The vacate area does not contain any utilities. There is an eight-inch sewer main underneath Cothie Avenue and a six-inch water main on the west side of Cothie Avenue. The applicant's requesting to vacate the 2,046 square feet of city-owned right-of-way at north of 312 Cothie Avenue. The triangular lot is 90 feet by 35 feet, by 75.2 feet, by 85.42 feet. The applicant does not have, does not have a principal permitted use building in compliance with the zoning ordinance. The structure is only partially finished and is not in compliance with the building code either and has not passed final inspection from building inspection for repairs made to the structure. Staff would like to see the applicant operate the business in compliance prior to any additional city-owned property to be vacated. There's no plating as part of this request, therefore staff recommends that the request to vacate 2,046 square feet of city-owned right-of-way at north of 312 Cothie Avenue be denied for the following reasons. Request could have any of impact on traffic conditions by impacting vehicle turnaround on Denon Street, including emergency vehicles. Request could make snow removal more difficult at a Denon Street. The applicant has been in violation of numerous city code and ordinances. And staff would like to see adherence to said regulations prior to any extensions or to vacate any city-owned property. And that's the staff report.
So this is Do Not, and I don't know if this is questions for staff or general comments. I had, I had some concerns about in the staff report where it says staff and staff analysis and zoning ordinance, and then it goes through the problems with this development, this location. And so it would be on page 53 in the packet. And so, yeah, I agree with the staff recommendation based on what's outlined in the packet. Because you can't expect us to approve an item with this many questions and this many issues that the staff has already come with us at the beginning, that these are issues that need to be addressed before, before an item can be approved. And so, you know, that's where my position is right now.
This is Holdeman. Wasn't this property before us once before?
Or encroachment agreement?
A few months ago.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, this is Schrader with staff. That's correct. The previous request was for an encroachment agreement. This is to vacate and purchase the right-of-way.
And I don't remember, what was the approval, I mean, what was the status, the approval or disapproval of the previous item? Or do we need?
This is Schrader with staff. It was recommended for denial. It was never, it never was moved forward and acted on by the city council.
Have we heard, this is Wilbur, have we heard from the adjoining property owners? In particular, the, I think it's the business to the west?
This is Schrader with staff. Yes, we have heard from at least one of the other adjacent property owners to the west. Mr. Jacob Lehman, who did note his opposition to the request.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anybody else on the phone. Eric, is someone, is the applicant there in the chambers?
Yep, the applicant is here.
Okay. Please come forward and state your name and your address.
Niamh Masick, 312 Cothie. My question is, what concerns do you guys have that I'd? Or do you guys have a list of these concerns that I could fulfill?
So, yeah, it's on page 53 in the packet.
He doesn't have a packet, Eric. So, that's not fair.
But do you, Eric, do you guys give him, do you give him a list of this stuff? Okay, or I guess he probably should know it anyway.
Well, I guess what it says in here, since you don't know, is "The building is only halfway renovated with improper siding not yet finished on the exterior. The owner has been to court but has not rectified this problem. The owner has three separate parcels he owns. One parcel is the main building site and has grandfathered gravel parking since it was all in place in 1964. The other parcels have been cleared for redevelopment, but improperly used for vehicle display, storage, and the parking of vehicles as proper hard surfacing has not been put in place. Three, it would appear more appropriate for the applicant to bring the site and building into compliance with the siding and the hard surfacing, which is under the building code zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance and stormwater ordinance, and then look at the disposal of the parcels. The fire department did also in public works have major concerns with the vacate because it would be more difficult for emergency vehicles, snowplows, and garbage trucks to turn around on a dead-end street if the vacate is approved." That's basically the points that we have been given to deny the request.
Well, it also said something about there is no principal permitted use building. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, the applicant does not have a principal permitted use building in compliance with the city zoning ordinance. The structure is only partially finished and is not in compliance with the building code, nor has it ever passed final building inspections from the building inspection department for repairs made to the structure.
So I'm sure, I was going to add that I'm sure that these issues that Commissioner Flynn just outlined here would be addressed and rectified and fixed according to what the commission would want. That the commission would be more amenable to accepting and approving the request if, if these items that were just outlined here were addressed to our, to our satisfaction.
So you're, you're saying you weren't aware of any of these items that?
No, I'd like to see, do you guys have a list of stuff?
Can I give him this sheet of paper?
I've never seen any emergency vehicles come down this dead end. And really nobody uses the dead end besides me and the neighbor Gruger at the moment. And that's how it's always been, and nobody really uses the street.
I think they, you know, I think the fire and rescue kind of indicated on there that wasn't like a making or breaking point, but I think that those items listed and being in non-compliance of all of those items tend to convince us that we need those fixed before we would, you know, consider a vacate.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to say. I was trying to be in support of what you just said there.
Lehman Trucking is down there. Don't they use that street?
No, they don't. They, they use Ash, Ash Street or Ashland Street, something like that. Maybe that's the next.
Isn't that though, isn't that the gentleman though that noted his opposition, Eric?
No, that was Jacob Lehman, Jacob Lehman.
This is Schrader with staff. Yeah. Jacob Lehman and his father, Laverne Lehman, own the properties to the west side of Cothie at the north end. And they recently went to the board of adjustment to get a variance to the rear yard setback for that northerly building so that they could adjust the property line and are proposing to sell that lot to a different business, which would therefore have its only access off of Cothie.
One other thing. This is Jamie Knudson, city engineer. This property in question also has not completed all the stormwater improvements that are required under the ordinance. We're still waiting, it's been six, seven years now that we're still waiting for him to complete all of the stormwater improvements that were approved back at the time of the initial work was done.
They told me that the stormwater retention pond would have to be made if there was hard surfacing. There is no hard surfacing there, so.
By, by ordinance that's written in there, it says it needs hard surfacing.
What part of it?
That I don't know.
Well, it said something about the two lots that weren't grandfathered in.
Right.
What two lots are those? The ones that are south? The far south one in the corner?
The south one and the east or southeasterly one.
That, that would be the one in the front corner?
The one directly south of the building? In between the building and the house to the south? I don't know.
Well, the corner lot over there, I don't really have any plans to use. I just, you know, came with the property when I bought it. What I want to use is the north lot. That's, you know, that's the, that lot has gravel on it, it's got everything.
Right, but it would have to be hard surfaced unless you were submitted an application and approved by the board of adjustment for a variance to not pave it. That one is right-of-way. There's, you can't grandfather in right-of-way.
Cause that lot belonged to the, to the parcel that the garage is on.
No, to the north has never belonged to that. Well, maybe before the state of Iowa purchased it.
Yeah, before, yeah, yep. Cause it was all one piece at one time.
Yep, but any, any grandfathering it had back then has long since lapsed since it was discontinued that use for more than one year. It became right-of-way. There are right-of-ways, you know, shoulders, turnarounds at the end of dead-end streets that are gravel that are allowed as such as part of right-of-way. But if vacated and used as a parking area, the ordinance would require that it be hard, properly hard surface, as would the lot to the south of the building.
This is Wilbur. I'm looking at the map in the packet and then I think it's similar to the assessor's map. Is the actual building that labeled the 312 Cothie, is that actually in the vacate area?
This is Schrader with staff. No, it, it looks very close. It may very well be zero lot line or it might be a couple feet off. Sometimes those areas are a little misleading, especially based on the, the angle of view. The higher the building is, the more it can kind of distort that view.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else there in the chambers that is here to speak on this agenda item?
Yes, there is.
Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Kenan Sheta and I'm currently staying at my mother's home in Trera, Iowa, which is on 500 Toledo Street. And I've known Niamh now for about three years. I purchased a car from him. Two of my coworkers have purchased automobiles also. We're very happy. He's a very much an entrepreneur with his brother. And I would like, I'm considering possibly moving to Waterloo, retiring in Waterloo. And I would like to see a community that prides itself in diversity, help a lot of the entrepreneurs that come to this community and show them the right way to do this. I've spent most of my adult life just outside of the city of Chicago. And we have, actually the suburb I lived in was already developed in the 1920s for the most part. But Waterloo has changed a lot in many years. I can remember in the late 50s, early 60s, coming up Highway 63 and how different it is now. There's been a lot of expansion and development in Waterloo. This is a good thing. And I would like to see everyone here encourage entrepreneurs, people maybe from other countries who come here to show them what can be done. I've been there, cause I, I stopped there. I bought my car there. That, if that is the city of Waterloo's land, then tell me what the city is going to do with it. It's a, it was a very small parcel because of the expansion of what is now called Broadway Street. When I think, I guess, we were talking before the meeting, Highway 20 was expanded to four lanes, divided four lanes. It was a completely different layout before that Broadway was expanded, I believe. That would be my guess. And I don't, we were trying to figure out even what year that would have been done, so that would have been way back when, when it was Highway 20 and then they wanted to expand it and it affected back then the different properties along the way. So I think we need to either, we, I don't, really it's you, need to decide what are you going to do with some of these parcels of land that are kind of orphaned out there when you have someone willing to take it and improve a business and increase tax revenues, so. And so I would like to at least personally commend Niamh and his brother for being very good entrepreneurs, very good businessmen. And really, I think they're a big asset to this. And really, um, I think they're a big asset to this community, and I'm sure they too want their property to be, uh, used in a correct way, environmentally correct way. And for it to be an asset to the city of Waterloo.
Okay, thank you. Is there, is there anyone else there in the chambers that is here to speak on this agenda item? Any further discussion or amongst the commission?
So, my comment is, I would support this item if the questions that were addressed, uh, that we had discussion here earlier. If the questions that were addressed in the staff analysis and the zoning ordinance section, um, if those items and those concerns, questions were addressed, then I would be in support of this item. And also including addressing the, the drainage or the, um, the comment from the engineering staff, uh, that they had questions that that item be addressed as well. So, that's my concern.
And, and this is, uh, Commissioner Wilbur, I would echo that and just add that I share similar concerns, especially in terms of, uh, the length of time that, um, some of these requirements have been in place and have gone, um, uncompleted. Um, so it's not necessarily that it's a brand-new requirement or a brand-new business. Um, I support small business and entrepreneurs in our community, but, uh, they also have to be willing to work with the city and meet all the requirements. Um, and it seems like these are kind of a long-term, ongoing concerns and not brand-new. Um, I think engineering said six, seven years in particular for the storm drainage. So, um, that would be my position.
This is Flynn, and I too would like to, because I, I do think it's great that, um, you're making a business and supporting your families and, and helping other people. But I do think that we can't set precedence and let violations keep going on and on without being addressed. So I don't know if it would be possible, but we could get a, um, um, building staff and maybe engineer and go out to the land with the owner and show him exactly what needs to be done. I, I think that would be fair if you would be willing to do that. Because those are, um, there's established and protocols that we have to meet. So, um, I think if we can't meet those, then we can't move forward. So that would be my opinion.
Uh, this is Lystico. Uh, I, I would love to see this business thrive. Uh, I hope that we can somehow get a plan of action to, you know, get, get on the right track as far as conforming to city ordinance and guidelines. Uh, with that said, though, the, the best way to, you know, celebrate diversity and, and keep a fair playing ground for everyone is a, a uniform application of the process that we have within this commission. Uh, therefore I will, uh, motion that we deny the request to vacate two thousand four hundred sixty square feet of city-owned right-of-way at north of three twelve Cothie Avenue for the following reasons. The request could have a negative impact on traffic conditions by impacting vehicle turnaround on the dead-end street, including emergent, emergency vehicles. The request could make snow removal more difficult at a dead-end street. The applicant has been in violation of numerous city code and ordinances, and staff would like to see adherence to said regulations prior to any extensions or to vacate any city-owned property.
Second. Sorry.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor state aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, motion carried. In terms of, um, cleaning out more specifics or revisiting those, um, Eric, would, um, Mr. Masick contact engineering then or planning?
Uh, yes, um, Commissioner Flynn suggested staff arrange a meeting out on site, and we are more than willing to do that. So, um, we'll get in contact with the applicant and see if we can arrange a time, um, for multiple departments, planning, engineering, and any of the other impacted departments to meet on, out on site and discuss those building inspections.
So I have a question for staff. With this last item that we just voted on, I agree with the vote that we just took. So if, if the applicant, um, fixed all the items that we were talking about that we were concerned about, and then brought this item back, said, back before the commission later and said, now at this such and such a time, I have addressed all of your concerns, I have fixed everything, and can we have the item reconsidered at that later time? I would support that, but at this time, I support the vote that the commission took.
This is Schrader with staff. Yeah, that, that is definitely a possibility.
Okay.
So, well.
Thank you, everyone.
Can we, does the city call him or does he call the city? So he has direction?
Uh, either way.
Which would you prefer? Okay, so city will call you.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Masick. Um, all right, any other further discussion? Our next meeting is August tenth. Um, if not, we have a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
State aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.